Well. Are we alive?
Yes, we are.
Okay. This time I'd like to call the city council, we need order is April twenty seventh, seven o'clock or via Zoom. And first we'll have the. I have the flag here.
Flag, United States of America, and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty of justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, you don't see Ash Welsh here, do you?
No, it's the last meeting of the, was he gonna be in this one?
He told me Sunday he'd be here, but I don't see him.
I didn't send him a link because I didn't know.
No, I saw you didn't have him on, but he told me, well, if he's here, he's here.
Uh, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have a link, so he couldn't get in. I didn't know because it's normally first, so. I didn't know that.
Give me a moment of silence if you will, please. Thank you. We'll call council members.
Ms. Alt?
Here.
Mr. Botkins?
Here.
Ms. Earlston?
Here.
Dr. Felner?
Here.
Mr. Ivy?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mr. Triplett?
Here.
All seven council members are present. Now we'll have roll call elected officials.
Mayor Larry?
Here.
Auditor Baldinger?
There.
Director of Law Palmer?
Yeah, yeah.
Treasurer Sparks? Safety Service Director Ward?
Here.
Okay, we all had a chance to read the minutes of the April thirteenth meeting. Do we have a motion to approve them?
I'll make a motion to approve them in this April thirteenth meeting.
And Mr. Watkins made the motion. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Richard seconded it. Any additions or any additions or corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Compose likewise.
Really ramp.
Okay, uh, next we have, uh, we have to add a couple of ordinances to the agenda. One, first one is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six. Do we have a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six to the agenda.
Heard the motion by Dr. Fowler. Do we have a second? Mr. Botkin seconded it. Roll call.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
The ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-six been added to the agenda by a seven oh vote. Next, the, the ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-nine. Do I have a motion, motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add twenty twenty-one days thirty-nine to the agenda.
Mr. Triplett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ivy.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
The ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-nine has been added to the agenda by a seven oh vote. Now to have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Uh, Mr. President, before we.
Oh, hold on.
I'm sorry. The, if I could ask the law director question about how we're gonna handle thirty-three? As voted out, then there's that what, for lack of a better term, substitute? Should that be? Added to the agenda now?
No, what we're gonna do, Tom, is, is, uh, it's automatically on the agenda as it was passed out of committee. We're gonna have them amend it on the floor.
All right, I didn't, I wasn't sure, and before Doc got the agenda approved, I didn't want to get passed where we could do something with it, so thanks.
That's what it is.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Hey, Dr. Fowler made the motion, seconded by.
I'll second.
Uh, who was that?
Mr. Richard.
Mr. Richard, okay. Uh, uh, all in favor, say aye. Okay, opposed likewise. The agenda is approved as amended. Moving on to ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-three. Julie?
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three, and tell the ordinance requesting the trustees of the Egbert M. Freeze Foundation to distribute income there from, to the City of Galleon for the purposes outlined herein and declaring an emergency.
Okay, discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, this came out of Parks and Recreation Committee last week. This is the annual request, uh, for the freeze, uh, potential freeze projects. Uh, there are two different categories here, and I believe the mayor was alluding to, uh, just a moment ago with the law director on, uh, subjects. It'll be under B, one through four.
Correct.
Under deduction, or our standard requests this year is for the bike path, bike path extension of, uh, phase two of three. The, uh, recommended high sea, uh, pool improvements that we've discussed. Uh, some upgrade to the east park backstop and field. The dog park, uh, that we will discuss in a little bit, uh, as far as possibly putting it in two different locations. Uh, the replacement of the Frank Park Shelter in the Splash Park parking lot that was discussed two weeks ago in full council, I believe. Um, and then? The sum of eighty thousand, three hundred dollars, that is, uh, from funds that were not, uh, requested or, uh, spent last year on those four subject matters below. And with that, I would ask if the mayor would please interject and, uh, elaborate a little bit on those four items. Thanks, Mr. Ivy. I would, um. The, uh, I'll go through quickly. What these are what, uh, I would describe as, um. Uh, ways to work around the ordinary process and work around, in my view, isn't a negative word, but the, uh, this is replacement? For equipment that was, uh, that this will be new equipment the city will own. So freezer and another large, um, piece of kitchen equipment. Uh, it was stolen last year. They've replaced it, and what we're, we, if this gets approved, we'd ask them to invoice the city, and when we get our freeze dollars, we'd send them the forty-five hundred. Um, the next one you may, uh, have seen, uh, through the Y, they had requested six thousand of eight thousand, uh, to do a summer park? A program one day a week, and they would move the, the programming and the location around the, to our various parks. It's, I think, a real good, uh, start of something that was done, oh, many years ago now with the summer rec program, so we'll, um. It's, it's new. I think it's, if it's, um. Appeal to families and the young people will, you know, determine whether or not this is a good idea and something we want to try to, um, add to as years go forward. Uh, the next one is the fencing on the south end in High Sea Park on the football field. Uh. The, uh, there's some discussion as to whether this would just be replacing the chain link that's there with new chain link. Uh, or maybe a more decorative fence. And, excuse me, and the, the portable bleachers, um. If, uh, if you, when you're at local events, when we have, uh, good teams and good crowds, uh, we're always seen to be short on, on, uh, bleachers, whether it's out at Amens or, um. At the tennis, um. Courts, at football field, at the baseball field. So the idea here is to have portable bleachers, uh, that, that, uh, the city would own and move around, probably largely on school properties. Or not on school properties, but at school events in, in the park. Uh, in primarily High Sea Park or Amens. And then the last one is, um. Uh. This is, we're hoping to buy three, we've actually ordered them, but three benches, uh, for along the, the bike path. Uh, we've, we've, uh, had commitments from two of the service clubs to buy one each, and this would be the third one that we would, um, be putting up. No. Uh, excuse me. Even, Mr. Know-it-all makes mistakes. Um, this is the, the Nazarene. So, yeah, we are gonna do, uh, benches. We're not gonna use freeze funds. The NAS, um. Had asked to have some stuff put on their property. That doesn't seem likely, uh, but their idea of having a small park, pocket park? Uh, out there near the Nazarene Church, Galleon Arms, is really a, a pretty large cluster of young people, uh, in that immediate area. So that's what that money would be for. If we can work out the property arrangement, that they would either, they would make a long-term lease, uh, to the city. Council satisfactory with that, then, uh, we'd kind of go ahead and, and follow through with, uh. With this playground apparatus, so. Sorry, I got that confused with the bike path, uh, benches, but. Number four is at the Nazarene Church. It's playground equipment. That's really what I got, Aaron. I hope that answers the questions. They, they, I think all of these are either in the park? Or would be on city property, so some of the concerns about use of freeze funds? Uh, outside of city parks or city property, I think it satisfies those, and so we'll, um. With council support, we'll go ahead and make a request for, um, the only thing that's not in here, Aaron, I might add, is that this eighty thousand, there was, um, a remainder, an unused portion from last year of about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So this only uses, um, you know, about half of that, so it's all I got, folks. I guess the only question, uh, the only comment that I would like to have is on subject number four, the playground equipment and benches. Is there an asterisk beside it that says contingent upon land donation to the city? Yeah. That was not the understanding that I had, uh, with the pastor when he was at the, towards the end of that call, when we were discussing possibly purchasing that small area of land? Uh, with the city dollars, uh, to get that, uh, playground equipment out there, and. You know, I don't know if anybody has any opinions about that, but, I mean, the others, to me, are pretty cut and dry. Except for that number four, which there's a big difference, in my opinion, between donating land to the city to put a park on versus the city going into a lease contract or purchasing land for the sole purpose of putting, um, playground equipment on that. It's two separate. I wouldn't disagree with that. I would say that a long-term lease that, uh, we retain ownership of the equipment might satisfy it, but, um. Yeah, I, I, I did notice that they weren't as enthusiastic about donating the, the land as they were about. You know, a different kind of arrangement, so.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes, I remember that conversation. Uh, they really hadn't made up their mind yet, so I think we just have to wait on their decision.
Yeah.
Anything else? So with that said, would we make an amendment if we wanted to pass this through full council tonight? To request these freeze dollars, but remove the playground, playground equipment in the benches, uh, contingent on the decision that's gonna be made in the future, whether they're gonna donate it or whether they're going to expect us to purchase the land? Let me defer, call that a Thomas, not a Tom question.
Well, it, you, you know, it all depends on what you want to do. Uh. If you want to keep it in there, in a just. I mean, you could amend the, where it says contingent upon land donation to the city. You could change that to contingent upon land donation or purchase to the city or purchased by the city. I mean, you can do it that way to give some flexibility there. Uh. That's a possibility. Or you could take.
Uh, contingent upon land acquisition.
Or you could do that, yeah. Land acquisition works, and just take out. Take out the.
Donation, replace.
Word.
Yeah.
Yep, that works too.
Acquisition by the city.
Yep, yep, yep. I agree with that.
I guess my question, and thank you, Mr. Palmer, I guess my question would be to the other six members of council, um, is that do we want to, um, for the, uh. I guess for the better terms, uh, get into the habit of purchasing land, um, in lieu of donations to put or to request freeze dollars. Um, I mean. You know, the Nazarene Church, and this year, who would be next year, the year after? I, I guess that's the better way to frame the question. If any other council members have an opinion. Um, that'd be great.
Um, I, I think I might prefer to just eliminate section four. We can always revisit, um, with another ordinance, um. I, I don't. I don't see that, um, asking for the seventy-eight or, um, setting aside the seventy-eight hundred and then not spending it is a problem of. But, uh, for simplicity's sake, uh, just eliminating section four, uh, seems to be the easiest thing to do.
And we can always come back and revisit if we need to later in the year. Is that?
Certainly.
Is that acceptable? I guess Pandora's Box has been a term that we've kind of opened up, uh, and introduced in the past couple of weeks, and. You know, just want to be mindful of that, at least I am anyway, so in fairness.
Does somebody want to make a motion to, or Kara?
One more question, I'm sorry. So for the summer park play days, whatever we were talking about, I. Mayor Larry, you said that you thought that this would be done on city property. I guess, could you just explain how that wouldn't be just? Uh, giving that money to the YMCA, since we have to be mindful of how we're spending? These dollars and not getting them.
We'll have a contract. The proposal would be to have a contract with the Y? To have, and, and really just adopt what they had proposed originally, uh, two sessions, five weeks each, uh, one day a week in those five weeks, and they would, um. Uh. Meet on, in parks, talk about the history of Galleon. There's a, there's a, in the original proposal, there was a list of curriculum. I just think it's, um. Um, it's something that in, if, um. That one day a week, it's coupled with the summer lunch program, uh, you can get those two programs working together, but it's, it's, um. Something to try to give a little bit more organized activities to, you know, to young people in the community during the summertime.
And, one more question. I don't know if you know the answer to this. Are those programs free, or is that eight thousand dollars gonna go to, like, providing, um, scholarships or financial assistance to kids who can't afford the program?
You know, my understanding before we worked out that contract with the Y is that it would be free. And they, and they would use that eight thousand to cover staff and any expenses, but there wouldn't be a charge to attend it. And if, when that's linked in with the lunch program, it'd probably be a, a good. Um, a good arrangement, but. It's the first time it's been, uh, proposed and relatively modest amount, and if it goes well, uh. I think we'll all be happy, and if it doesn't go well, we'll, we won't. No one shows up, we won't hear anything one way or another, but I, I think, I think well-promoted, we'll get, you know, several dozen kids there and. Kind of play it by ear.
Mr. Watkins?
Yes, uh, Tom, is this?
Yeah.
Want to be open to members only, or is it the whole community?
I think it's, I guess that's kind of what Kara was saying. My understanding and what Will, I think we're, um. We would, the, Nikki would sign a contract for this if it was clear that it, there was no fee. That this was just open to anybody in the community. I think the notion of moving it around gets it, you know, closer to some of the parks. I don't, it, it wouldn't be at Tysee every week.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And if I could, Mr. President, uh, Mayor, just briefly, if you could, on the dog parks, we, we had been discussing Kobe Park, and I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that we're now looking at two potential sites. One at, uh, Kobe Park and another on some of the additional land that's left over down at South Park. So I just wanted my fellow council members to be aware of that as well. Which is not a bad thing, so. Thanks for bringing that up. If you recall last year when there was a little bit of a, um. Uh, disgruntlement among some people in South Park about locking up the baseball field. And really what the, the dog owners were saying is it's their part too, and what they needed was a place? That they could, uh, allow their dogs kind of cooped up to get out and run around. So if you, if you look at the map, we have a, um. Certainly at least an acre in the part of, uh, South Park that's really unused. There's some trees, and so the idea would be to put one there. And then I think there's more, um. I think there's, uh, and more people have thought about using Kobe Park that way. I think we can do that as well, and the, what the five, uh, fifty thousand, rather. Uh, we hope that that would get us, uh, a couple of acres worth of four-foot fence. So that's what that expenditure would be. Uh, we're going to, just to finish the thought, we're going to apply for, um. Our nature works money for, for a bathroom that can be placed out there, uh, and that, that money is usually awarded midsummer. We don't. It's kind of late to get a project going this, but we'll get a new bathroom out there, and, um. It was pointed out to me, Doc Fowler said that there's a, we have sort of a, an open air, uh. Pavilion out there. I guess we got a big hole in the, in the shelter out there, so we'll, with more people out there, we'll, we'll certainly have to take care of that, but that's certainly more of a ma- maintenance job. So it's, uh, you know, you could, if one doesn't have popular support, then, you know, we won't invest any more money. But if both of them do well, then we'll look at ways to add a, you know, a few more feet or make it, uh. More attractive for larger number of dogs.
Okay, anybody wish to make an amendment here to the, uh, and delete item four or not?
Make the. You. Go ahead. You wouldn't be. Or Tom.
Sorry, go ahead, Aaron.
No, go ahead, Mr. Palmer.
I was just gonna say, you wouldn't be deleting item four. You have to amend. Anyway, so what you would be doing is amending to add section B? And just adding only, uh, items one, two, and three.
And you would be changing the amounts for item two in the first section and item five in the first section as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the totals that go along with.
I think the easiest way to do that then would be to amend section one. To change section one in its entirety, except for section B four, subsection B four.
Yeah, that, yeah, yes. To replace it with that.
Anybody wish to make that amendment?
Uh, 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 Mr. President, I'll make, I'll, I'll take a stab at it, um.
That's what I'm afraid of.
The to- the total in section three needs to be amended as well, so.
Julie kind of walked the ass going through here. Uh, the first thing would be to, uh, amend, um, section one. Uh, to include, uh. Item B. Uh, numbers one, two, and three. Um. With the, uh, then also to, in section three? To amend the total to five thirty-four, seven fifty-eight? And have I missed something?
Amen.
You have to change in section A.
Yeah, in the, in section A, you would change, uh.
The total.
The total to four fifty-four, four fifty-eight, and the total for A two is now twenty-three, four fifty-eight. And the total for A five is fifty-nine thousand instead of six.
I would like to make a motion to add what Julie just said. And, uh. I think, I, I think we covered it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Heard the motion by Mr. Richard, is seconded?
I'll second that motion.
Um, Mr. Dr. Fowler seconded, um, okay. Um, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Amendment passed by seven oh vote. Now back to the ordinance. And for the discussion on this?
It's the president, uh, unless there's further discussion, that this is always a, uh, good thing for the community, uh, so, uh, and. I feel that it should be something we should really start and get going with, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on amended ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three.
Heard the motion by Mr. Richard.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ivy, roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yep.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passed by seven oh vote. Now back to the ordinance.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to, uh, pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three as presented.
As amended.
As amended and presented.
Heard the motion by Mr. Ivy is second.
But, but.
Mr. Botkin seconded it, uh, in discussion. And roll call.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-three is passed by seven oh vote. We'll be going to ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-four.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four, and tell the ordinance authorizing the safety service director. Fight for and accept a law enforcement body armor grant made available through the Ohio Attorney General and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading, the ordinance discussion?
Uh, yes, this went to police, fire, and health. Um, Eunice presented it to our committee, and, um. This is something, so Eunice jump in if I, um, forget anything, but this is something that I believe is applied for, or every year. Um, so it is for ten, um, bulletproof vest for the police department.
And?
Correct, and I would just add note that it is in the budget, our portion, um, and everything is in the budget already.
Okay, other discussion? Chief?
Actually, if I could say something, one of the, one of the side benefits of, of. One of the departments getting grant or the other is the fact that, uh, we've, we, we get handed down equipment that maybe we wouldn't otherwise, otherwise get, so. Police Department gets new vests, which is great, protects them, and then they're able to hand their old stuff down to, to, uh, our responders, our ambulance, uh, our paramedics. And when they go on scene, you know, they're able to be protected, as you know, uh, how, kind of how the world works right now, so. It kind of, they get a grant, they get great new stuff, and then we get their handmade outfits, which is, is better than new for us. And so it benefits multiple departments, one department can get a grant like that, so I, I, I wanted to make sure that was mentioned.
Thanks.
Any other questions or discussion on this ordinance?
Um. Mr. President, um, Eunice, is there a time factor on the? Uh, grant application?
Yes, the ball is already rolling very well on this.
Yeah, it's already been, we've already been notified that we've been awarded it, so.
Oh, okay, well, that's nice. Uh, so, having, uh, since that's already been meant. Uh, Mr. President, let somebody else have some question. I would like to make a motion, uh, to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four and move it to the final reading.
Heard the motion to suspend the rule by Mr. Second by Mr. Ivy, the roll call.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
We suspend the rules, it's passed by seven oh vote. Now, discussion on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four.
And Mr. Triplett made the motion to pass the ordinance, seconded by Mr. Botkins, uh, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earlston?
Yes.
Dr. Felner?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Ms. Alt?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-four is passed by seven oh vote, final reading. Next ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-five.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five, and tell ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety-two, permanent twenty twenty-one appropriations. By transferring funds in the coronavirus relief fund and declaring an emergency.
Station on this ordinance?
Oh, yes, this came through finance committee, and I would just like, uh, Ms. Colleen to briefly explain it.
Sure, thank you, Dr. Felner. I'll explain my portion and then probably pass it off to Chief Jackson. This ordinance, um, is not an additional appropriation, it's just a transfer of some existing, uh, COVID money that was carried over from last year that is in the budget. It is currently sitting in the reimbursement line, and we need to move it into the operating supplies to be able to. Into the operating supplies to be able to purchase some uh, fire gear. Chief, if you'd like to add into that then on your side?
That's exactly what we're asking. We're asking to use uh, forty-nine thousand, some change of the. Four hundred and twenty thousand remaining from twenty twenty COVID relief money. Uh, to purchase firefighter turnout gear, and why that is connected is the fact that that's kind of our first line of defense and something that's been. Um, you know, when they go on a car accident and when, when the, the fire engine responds with the ambulance and an assist. Um, that, that gear has become contaminated and had to be um, you know, washed and laundered and all that, and so. Uh, that, that's why we're asking. We, we, we think it's, it's taking all on our gear. It's something that, that falls within the parameters of that COVID money, which is. Not budgeted for, for this year, uh, in some sort of used and incurred due to a public health emergency, which the COVID crisis was. And it's got to be spent between last year and the end of this year. So it falls within those three parameters. And i- it, it gives ourselves a second set of gear, so when they are contaminated, they can launder their, their first set. If we don't, we, you can't dry that gear, it sets aside for, for hours. And we're able to use a second set to then respond for the rest of the day because we, we work twenty-four hours a shift, so. Um, it, it's something that was actively in the budget for next year, so it's going to save the city a, a potential purchase in the future. And uh, I'll ask, answer any questions you have.
Any questions of the chief?
Mark.
How'd you do it before?
Well, we've had a second set, but that set is not within. I mean, number one, the second set is typically used on structure fires, but now this year with the COVID crisis, we've had to. Uh, decon more than we ever have in the past. So we've done it before because the, the chances of having a second structure fire in the same day are pretty low. But the chances of having a second MVA or a, uh, EMS call, that that person has some sort of, maybe. Signs or symptoms of COVID and we had to come back and decon, has happened tenfold more than it ever has in the past, so. Uh, the kind of different circumstances.
Thanks, buddy.
Any other questions?
This president, uh, if there's no other questions, obviously, we need to move this fund, so. I would like to make a motion at this time to uh. Suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five and move it to the final reading.
I will second that question.
Rules, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Mrs. Earleston seconded it. Uh, roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Okay, it passed by seven oh vote. Now discussion on the ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Triplett, second. Your Ivy, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felmer.
Yes.
Okay, that passed also by seven oh vote. Uh, chief, is he still your buddy?
Always, um.
Okay.
No more money, Jackson.
Twenty twenty-one days thirty-six, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids. And to enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder, therefore, as provided by law, for the demolition of five fourteen Harding Way East, Galleon, Ohio. To proceed to authorizing payment, therefore, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, yeah, who wants to take this?
Yeah, I'll go, it didn't go through committee, it kind of got pulled, uh, Mr. President. Uh, we, in the time that that was being discussed in committee, believe finance. Uh, it could have been developed the night before, but since then, we've been able to secure the deed. Uh, I've gone ahead and allowed the, the current owner till Friday to get whatever personal possessions. They wanted a couple of weeks, we gave them. Like ten days. And uh, so what this does is, uh, put, with passage, we'll put into motion the ability to. Get bids and get that, uh, what I call the Logan Furniture Store, get that torn down. So um, so what it is, there's twenty-five thousand coming from the land bank. Comes in as a reimbursable, so I'll have to show that we expended the money and then we'll. Uh, get that, and then that will be in the city's possession for redevelopment, so it's.
Okay, thank you.
We've bird dogged it for a long time.
Okay, Mr. Triplett.
So, Tom, we do own that property then?
Yeah, we have the deed, uh, I think that was signed over in the, in the um. Previous owner's lawyer has the deed. I don't know if he's physically brought it up here, but yes.
Okay, thanks.
We've seen the deed, Mark.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions, Mrs. Earleston?
I just wanted to comment, um, as, as I did when, when this was discussed in committee, that this is something we've been working on for a long time, is that correct?
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Yeah, and um, also the fact that we were able to secure the deed is a big. That's a big plus, because that doesn't always happen, am I correct in that?
Well, when we use block grant funds, CDBG funds and do demo using a blight. That, that property still remains the owners. And that's, has heart, caused heartburn for a lot of folks. What this does is, uh, we'll own the property. Uh, and you know, we'll, we'll then have the responsibility to, to do something with it. I, without getting too far into it. This gets passed, I, I think it has redevelopment potential and I'll start. Persuading those that are unpersuaded here as soon as we uh, get this passed.
I just think this is a, a win for the city, so.
Yeah, well, I'll kind of miss going over the overpass and seeing that, wondering when it could go down, so if we can get. You know, there, it's, it's just really health and safety. You know, that gets used a lot, folks, you know, health and safety, health and safety. This is really. Uh, a safety and, and your health would be badly affected if, if somebody got hurt out there, so thanks for.
For sure, thanks.
Your triplett. Mr. Triplett.
You're muted, Mark.
You're muted.
Oh, if there's no other questions, I'd like to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six.
Okay, you've heard the motion by Mr. Triplett, do we have a second?
Botkins.
Your Botkin seconded it, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Okay, it's passed by seven oh vote. Now discussion on the ordinance.
Mr. President, I'll make the motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, please.
You've heard the motion by Mr. Ivy, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Mr. Richard seconded, discussion. If not, roll call.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felmer.
Yes.
The ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-six is passed, seven oh vote, final. The next ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-seven, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, entitled ordinance authorizing the safety service director and or mayor to apply for and accept. Grant loan funds under round thirty-five of the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC funding to be used for. Five ninety widening project and declaring an emergency.
Who's the station in this ordinance?
I'll jump in here if I could, Carl. This is, uh, there's two ways to look at this. Uh, in interest money alone, if you'll recall, we were going to use the state infrastructure bank, they had a three-year inter- or three per-. Three percent interest. Uh, that interest cost would have been about two hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and forty thousand dollars over the, the loan period. So that zero interest, um, really make a big difference, uh, in terms of the affordability. This is, as you, when you get down below the, the now therefore part of this. Uh, in section uh, two, you'll see that this completes the one point. One one six five, uh, local share of that project. So while we, you know, we have. The rest of that money, you have to do the, you know, the subtraction, is all state and federal money, so. Um, a few years ago, I think there were some skeptics, but with this zero percent loan, I think it really makes this. Uh, completes the funding and it really, uh, will really save gas taxpayers. Over the next twenty years, a lot of money. So that's the, this is really, the ordinance, what it does is. Add the additional eight fifty loan to the previous Public Works Commission. Um, uh, contractor arrangement we had with OPWC.
Okay, thank you. Any discussions or questions on this?
Is, Mr. Pres- sorry, Mark, um, is there a timeframe on this? Obviously. To some extent, but.
Um. I, I don't know. I don't, pardon me?
I thought so, I thought it needed to.
I think what we're, the only, Mike, I would say the only urgency is that what we're doing is amending an agreement that we already have. And so I think that I, I'm, I know the city engineer would like to get this completed as soon as possible. Um, we're, we're, uh, we're a few weeks away from getting a certification of the, of. Of uh, the project's estimate, that cost, so um. You know, I guess a different way, I don't know any, uh, I'm not sure what would be given, uh, by waiting two weeks. Uh, heck, I've talked about this every chance I could for three years, so. If anyone would claim they've never heard of it, they would, I think their last name would be Van Winkle.
Well, so, no, the rea- reason why I was going to say, Tom, is that, um. I'd like to, to say that it's, it's, uh, it's very great that, uh, your office and you were able to, uh. Make arrangements where we did saves, actually saved some money on this. So, uh, uh, that's always a plus, no matter how you, how you approach it.
So I would say, Mike, if we don't pass it, then, then uh, people have to hear me talking about it for a couple more weeks, and if we pass it, we'll get on to getting it built. And uh, I know people like it when, when I, when we get things done rather than when I talk about it, so. I don't know what, what else to say. Yeah, I'm getting a little giddy, Mr. President. All right, that's, that.
Mr. Triplett.
Yeah, I'll suspend rules on ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven and get this to the final reading.
Second by Mr. Botkins, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yep.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Okay, and uh, motion to spend the rules. Discussion on the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplett, second by Mr. Botkins, discussion. Now roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earleston.
Yes.
Dr. Felmer.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
And passed it by seven oh vote, we won't have to hear it another three years, Mayor.
It'll take us a year and a half to build it, so that's, that'll be a lot of fun, too. Hey, while I'm on that, I, I, I want to have to. Add it to the report, um, if I could, on Brant Road, what I call Brant Road East. Between Portland Way and Market, uh, that's going to be, uh, have to be shut down the next couple of days. We're doing some. Uh, water line hookup, and I think everyone knows out there, uh, it's very unstable soil, so we don't want. Uh, vehicular traffic while we're down there trying to disconnect and reconnect a water line out there, so just a, a word of caution. Uh, you know, unfortunately, you'll have to go all the way into the park to get over to that north side of town, but. But hang in there, it'll just be a few days.
You said it was between Market and Brant, or Market and five ninety-eight, Mayor?
Yeah, that low spot there, that was wet, that, so we're out there, and we started to do the work and it just was unsafe, I think. Certainly for our crew, and you don't want to have somebody fall into a, you know, some abrupt sinkhole, so.
Okay, thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah.
Okay, next is ordinance twenty twenty-one days thirty-eight, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight, entitled ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty dash ninety-two. Uh, permanent twenty twenty-one appropriations by appropriating funds in the permanent improvement fund and declaring an emergency.
Hey, discussion in this ordinance?
Oh, yes, this came through economic development, and I'm going to ask the mayor to, I'm going to try and summarize, uh, what was stated. Um, this was, uh. Some work done by, uh, Mr. O'Leary, uh, to come up with some funds. Directed toward, uh, the street and infrastructure access to the Freeze Center. Um, the evening that we, uh, discussed this. Who gave us a presentation on five?
Mr. Frank House.
Thank you, thank you. Um, so Mr. Frank House also, um, uh, discussed, uh. I'm not sure how to classify it, um, the number was five twenty-one, but it was some state funds. That, um, they were able to, um. Acquire and to go toward the infrastructure and the road. So this ordinance represents the city's commitment from three of the departments. Um, it represents, we talked, uh, several weeks ago about, um. Uh, what should, uh, or should not the city's commitment be to the project and the, um. The large, uh, elephant in the room was the, the street and the infrastructure and, uh. Th- this, this money's while, and combined with what Mr. Frank House has, uh, acquired. Um, may not cover it. I don't n- know that, uh, with a hundred percent certainty. But in my mind, this represents a commitment by council, um, of support of that project, uh, the Freeze project. Um, I don't think it is, uh, it's, it's appropriating funds, um. It certainly hasn't been spent. Um, I don't know that it needs to be an emergency. I think it's got, um, time to be discussed. Uh, this is the, the first reading. Again, I'm going to look for Mr. O'Leary to, uh. Correct any misstatements I may have made.
Mr. President, if I could, just piggyback off Dr. Felmer for more clarification, this was a. A result of one grant that Mr. Frank House has been, has secured for about an amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the DSA. I also, he also informed us that he was, uh, working on other grant applications as well to go towards the infrastructure. Um, and you know, with or without approval of the Free Center in time, but just for the basic infrastructure. In that area out there for more economic development. Mayor, did I, did I, was I on point there?
Oh, I think the, the, if this, a project gets completed, it's going to take. Uh, efforts, uh, from Gary to secure funds, it's, there's going to need to be close collaboration. What this does is, um. Proposes to use the capital improvements funds, which, just so everybody is refreshed, those are funds that the city is. Uh, been receiving as a result of the sale of the former HTI building, which we called the South Street Commerce Center for. A minute or two. Uh, so if, in terms of using taxpayer money in water. Rate payer money in water or sewer, uh, this, I think, is, is a way to use the capital improvements fund. Make a long-term capital improvement. I think, um, with the exception of one or two people on this meeting, well. It, that line will still be in service when we all are not in service, uh, to the planet, but. Uh, to the planet, but you know, that, those lines are gonna be uh good for twenty, thirty years at a minimum. And uh, I think this will support the initial development. It'll also support any other, if you will, pop-up development that happens uh because of the center. So. Uh, one thing that Doc said that's, that I wanted to emphasize is that this really takes care of the water and the sewer. The stormwater is part of that four sixty. And so we're, we're very close to having all of that public infrastructure. Electric was, is in the estimate for the people who have looked, the pro formas and stuff, and, and the estimate they're using is three hundred thousand dollars to extend electric back there. Um. I think we can do significantly better than that if we acquire the poles. Uh, and extend that line to the west, much as we did. Extend it uh to the north from Brant Road up to where it, it ends now. So. You know, I hope that covers it. I think the suggestion that it doesn't have to be voted on tonight's probably true. Uh, but uh, I'm really um. An honest heartfelt appeal to, to, to uh get support for this. Uh, what this does is appropriate it. Uh, we won't, we, we would come back um. With a contract to allow the service director or an ordinance to allow the service director to advertise for bids. For these two pieces of infrastructure once their uh design is completed. So where this got derailed a couple of months ago, uh, the use of city funds to do the engineering. I don't think, we're not considering that. Wha- what I'm recommending is that we use capital improvements funds. To design and get ready to sell these two pieces of infrastructure. So we'll have. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll be pretty close. And if you indulge me one second, one of the things that as you look at. At this formula, it's being developed by the port and I, and, and I'm not, I think the city is gonna, for, for, when the Free Center happens, the city is gonna be. Uh, more involved than some folks maybe consider now. But. When the project um. Goes for additional state funds, I think it's extremely important that the city has. Uh, money in the project and that. The vibrancy funds that some people have heard discussed that Jobs Ohio has a custody of. Uh, I'd sure like to use those to help build the building and have the infrastructure. Um. You know, taken care of by our capital improvements fund. I think that, that presents a better uh package, if you'll accept that term, a better presentation to Jobs Ohio. Uh, in our request to, to, you know, get a lot of money to supplement what may or may not come through Freeze Funds. So. Thanks for listening. There's a lot there. So I, I didn't mean to overtalk, but I didn't want to leave that, any of those pieces out.
Questions or discussion on this further?
Yeah, Mr. President, Tom. How are you planning to pay for electric?
Uh, how much you say?
No, how are you gonna pay for the electric to get back there?
Well, you know, the uh. You know, my expectation is that we uh do like we have with other new electric customers. And that in the past, since I've been mayor, when, when it's a new electric customer. We have provided the line and the transformers just to get the, get the new customer. So I would. Uh, I'm not proposing that right now, but I would expect that as a discussion. Uh, as a way to do it. If that doesn't happen, then, you know, it will be up to the owner developer, whether that's the port or the city. Uh, to accomplish that. So.
Anything else?
Um, I, I'd just like to, you know, go back to, you know, what I said. Uh, the reason that I. Sort of was dismissive about the urgency. Was that I know that it was a pretty in-depth conversation, lots of questions. Um, and I wanted to, you know, give it time for, you know, uh, questions to come up i- if we could not uh. Do that in, in, in this meeting. So. Um, I, I didn't want to diminish the uh. My feeling of the, the importance um. Uh, of, of it, but. Um, just because I, I would like uh. Of support. I, I think it's important that uh, uh, the majority of council um su- support this project all the way through. And to me, again. Um, having a commitment by the city, um, i- is very important.
Yeah, with Ms. Alt, Ms. Alt, did you have your hand up?
I did have my hand up. So for the vibrancy or Jobs Ohio grant that you were talking about, Mr. Mayor O'Leary.
Mm-hmm.
Um, whenever that was written, was it written for infrastructure or just for general development of the area? And if we do fund this, will we, will the cities or the ports still get all of that money?
Or there has been what the call of a, I, I don't like the term, but that's Jobs Ohio, a pre-vetting. That has been submitted on behalf of the project. Um, I'm not sure if it's a partnership or the, the port, does kind of matter, but in any event. Um. And it's just a general uh example. In that uh initial presentation, they were carving out some of the requests for infrastructure. So I really think it, as I said a minute ago, if that is, is uh tweaked, if it's uh amended, that application that. That uh, I think that if the, if the Jobs Ohio money goes to the building, to the project. That really um is, you know, I think. Trying to understand what they may prefer, I think it, it uh meaning, they meaning Jobs Ohio. Um, I thi- I just think it strengthens the, the project not to have the infrastructure in there. And there's, and there's certainly the need for money to get the project itself built. So.
Mr. Triplet.
Yeah, as far as the city's commitment on this project, I think the city's already made a huge commitment. Mr. Ness donated the land. To the city. The city gave the land to the port. The port's gonna give the land to the Freeze Center. So I think the city's made it already a huge commitment to this project.
I wouldn't disagree, Mark. If I might comment on that, there's another part, the, the, when you look into. Uh, it, physical investments, not the swap of property and stuff. We extended Keller Drive. Uh, in part because we wanted to get that access point that now Valero uses every day and. And people will use it as a get-around when we build the, what I call the big project. But I, I think. Agreeing what, with what you're saying, we put in a pretty significant amount to widen five ninety-eight. And uh, put in that concrete extension. So uh, when I hear. Folks, maybe it doesn't happen a lot, but suggest that the city needs to contribute more. I'm very quick to point out, we already got a half million ahead on this and. And uh, not to mention the infrastructure for the hotel, uh, which I'm pretty confident we'll get, we'll recover that, I think. Uh. I think it's a matter of uh, of uh, the hotel selling, but I want to digress too far. But yeah, we haven't, we do have four hundred and fifty thousand that we still owe. On those improvements. And so, yeah, we, we do have a lot in it. Um. But uh. I guess without. I think to talk about over the next two weeks, like Doc Fowler is suggesting, is a really good idea. But I, my challenge kind of is, if we're not going to use the capital improvements fund. That we got by being entrepreneurial, if you will, by accepting the risk. I remember a, a handful of years ago, it's called a white elephant, you know, will kind of rue the day, it'll be a big disaster. Heck, the city's gonna get a million bucks out of it, a little over a million, and a new uh employer down there to boot. So. Um. I'm, I would like to see whatever we use capital improvements funds on be something that has a lasting impact. That's kind of why I'm, it's not kind of, that is why I'm suggesting this.
Mr. Ivy?
Yeah, if I could just add to that, I believe it was about this time last year that we invested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so to clear some of that land back there to be adjacent to the infrastructure. So. Just to add to what Mr. Triplet and the mayor is saying, we've already got a significant investment. In this uh, in this area for economic development. So.
Not to quibble over the amount, you're right, but I don't think we spent a quarter of a million. They, they did clear that back there and they use, and, and so. You're right about that. I'm not sure we spent quite that much.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
I could be off.
That's all right.
Uh, the discussions in this ordinance? Okay, if there's none, we'll move on to the next ordinance, which is ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, first reading.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash thirty-nine title ordinance designating Park National Bank. As a depository of the active funds of the City of Guy in pursuant to Ohio Revised Code one thirty-five. Twelve authorization, Safety Director to sign same and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading, the ordinance uh discussion?
Yeah, Carl. Oh, I'll start with this, and then if Eunice has anything to add, she can. She can add when I'm done here. Um, this depository agreement is a five-year agreement. With United Bank, we have uh, it expires May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Um, we need to uh. Make a couple of changes. The major change was taking Brian's name off of it and putting my name on. On the agreement and uh renewing this for another five years. Um, which takes it through May thirty-one of twenty twenty-six. So, that's really the.
Eunice, you have anything else on them?
I would just add that this is a requirement for our audit, and Park National Bank did review to make sure that. Um, if there were any changes, that the agreement was updated so that we are in compliance.
Thank you. Anything else on this?
Mr. President, uh, if there's no other questions, obviously, this is a um. Very important uh ordinance, not to say that none of, or all of are not, but uh. So having stumbled over my uh mouth here a second, uh, I would make a motion uh to suspend rules on twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
Heard the motion by Mr. Richards, second by Mr. Triplet, roll call.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Okay, motion spin the rules passed by seven oh vote. Uh, session on the ordinance. Mr. Triplet.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine.
Heard the motion by Mr. Triplet, second by Mr. Ivy, discussion. And roll call.
Mr. Triplet.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Ms. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Felner.
Yes.
It passed also by seven oh vote. Moving on to other business. Anybody want to start with uh upcoming committee meetings?
Mr. President, law and ordinance uh will be uh, as always, the first Tuesday, which in this case will be May fourth. At seven o'clock, uh, and it will be on Zoom.
Okay, Mr. Triplet.
That'll be Wednesday, May fifth, seven o'clock.
Okay, let's go next. Mr. Botkins?
Yes, I believe it's May twentieth at seven on Zoom, on the Streets Committee.
Mr. Ivy?
The thirteenth.
Thirteenth, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thirteenth, Mr. Ivy.
Uh, tentatively, Wednesday, May twelfth at City Hall.
Okay, uh, Ms. Earlston?
Uh, May twentieth, please fire and health on Zoom.
Okay, and Dr. Felner?
Yes, um. Uh, Airport Economic Development, uh, May eighteenth, uh, Finance, May nineteenth. Um, I like Mr. Ivy's confidence. Uh, we'll see you at City Hall.
Okay.
Are you trying to do those at City Hall?
I'm sorry.
Are you wanting to do those at City Hall?
If, if we're allowed.
Okay, everybody has to wear a mask.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have you been able to get uh any progress on the potential to Zoom live while we're up at City Hall, Julie? Any progress on that?
I'll, I'll be able to do it. It'll just be, it'll just look weird, but yeah.
It can't be any worse than this.
Well, at least this, everybody's in, I'll, I'll just have to zoom the room. So you'll see all you guys sitting around the table is what they'll see instead of their faces. And then they'll see Carl, because Carl's will be zooming in to the, at least to the committee meetings, right, Carl?
Right, mm-hmm.
So. And I don't know. I don't know if um, for the finance, I don't know how, if all the members are, and are ready to be in person or not. So.
At this point, then we have economic development, finance, and parks. In the council chambers, right?
Tentatively, yes.
Okay.
Subject to change at reasonable notice.
Yeah.
Any other business we brought up? If, if none, auditor.
Carl?
Yes.
Mr. Bodkins had something.
Oh, Mr. Botkins, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, first of all, I got a call from uh Penny Fox, and she thanked the city for doing some patchwork down in their neighborhood. On the streets, and one of her neighbors called and thanked us. And uh, another thing, I'd like to thank Mr. Palmer for his legal advice we uh received on a. Touchy subject. Buster Paul Bell and his wife called me, and they're uh trying to handle this legally. So. As far as I know, that's the way it's being done. But thank you, Tom, I appreciate it.
You bet. Okay. Uh, Mr. Baldinger?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh. Bring uh council up to date on uh. One item that we've been dealing with for a number of years, and that's the uh. The taking possession of the Central Hotel uptown. Uh, that is starting to get. Pretty close, close enough that our office needs to start uh. Start setting up bookworm, bookkeeping and stuff for the uh. For this, uh, when we take this over. And uh, Eunice has been in contact with the state and. She found out um, a couple of things. There's a good possibility that uh. Well, we're gonna have to establish a, a separate fund for all transactions for the hotel. So this will be coming to council. Probably. I'm gonna say in the near future. And uh, they also. Would mean, this will mean a separate reconciliation. Uh, since it'll be a different fund. Um. And it's got, uh, this will be part of the city going through our financials, will be a part of our audit. And uh. Belinda stressed that the management company needs to be aware of the documentation. And this. Extra audit will, could possibly significantly increase our cost of audit. So that's a few things that's gonna be coming down the pike here. Um. And uh. They even said it's a possibility we'll have to set up a, a separate bank account for, for all these funds to flow through, instead of putting it through our bank account that we have now. But I don't, um, Eunice has been in contact with them. If she has anything else she would like to share with you. She could feel free to do so, but. I just want counsel to be aware of what's coming.
Okay, uh, she's shaking her head no, so I guess she doesn't have anything to add to this. Um. Treasury Sparks is not on Zoom, I don't believe. Move to Law Director Palmer.
Just a uh annual reminder, and I did this a couple of times, the last time probably this year. Uh, your financial disclosure requirement, I believe it's May seventeenth. Is due to the state of Ohio. And uh, we have one council meeting, I think, between now and then, but if you haven't done it, now's the time. That's it.
Okay, Mayor?
I'll be merciful tonight, uh, both with information and the length. Uh, I had uh commented, reported, if you will, last evening that the CSX Crossing down on Portland Way South was gonna be closed. For three, four days over this weekend. Uh, cancel that. There, they have some health problems in the crew that does that uh. A crossing repair, so it, it uh will be rescheduled and we'll try to give. Uh, some sort of adequate uh, a week or so uh warning to people. We have so many people commuting. Uh, south to the Marion area to work or Columbus. It's uh, becomes pretty significant. Uh, extra five minutes or so in the runaround. So. You know, that's really uh mostly, I want to thank the uh council. Um. To, you know, for moving things forward tonight. There were a number of pieces of legislation that we really. Um, you know, will do, uh, you know, it's good to get it out. Uh, I think getting Freeze projects done this year is real critical to get that. Uh, over the foundation. They can meet, draw down the money, and we can be in business relatively soon. So anyways, that's what I have tonight. Any questions? Anyways, that's what I have tonight, any questions, I'd be, I'll try to answer.
Anybody have any questions, the mayor? Then, I don't really have any comments, so we have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Triplett made the motions, second by Mrs. Earlston. The pose likewise, meeting hereby adjourned at. Eight ten, eight ten, thank you all, good night.
Everyone.